Three, so today, what is the, oh. Fourth of July. Fourth of July, two thousand twenty five. Yeah, very important date, and you don't know why, and uh. Today is a very important day.
Fourth of July, it was, it was not like the actual day.
No, no, not fourth of July, uh fourth of June. Today is the fourth of June. July is a celebrating of my wonderful son's birthday. So next month's fourth of July is very important for me, because my first son's. Birthday, and that's the most important thing for me, but. June the fourth is also another very important day for me, and. It's a historical event, and then. My wonderful students in California Silicon Valley. Matthew is working with me on National History B and every topic on world history. Including literature, history. Intellectual history. Military history. Anything fun, okay, everything have related with history, like what happened to you yesterday. When you're biking, that was already history, Matthew, do, do you read that, right?
Yeah, just like it's not that significant.
Okay, that's right, riding a bike, how dare you say it's not important.
I think it's not, it's not that significant that someone would actually write a book about it.
Who knows?
I mean.
Who knows? When you become a very famous and you mention to somebody interviewing you that you're riding a bike. And your teacher somewhere in Texas make a big deal of it, and then give your inspiration. And you become a historian or stuff like that. Okay, go ahead, read to page, page twenty five and twenty six, go.
Okay, um Revolutionary Period Battle of Saratoga. Battle in se- in seventeen seventy seven was a victory and a turning point for the colonists.
Wonderful.
Ho- Horo- H- Hora- Hora Gates and Benedict Arnold. He- He- Benedict Arnold actually betrayed America.
He's a very interesting guy, right? He's a friend of George Washington, he's a genius, he's a brilliant. But out of jealousy of his peers, so jealousy is a human constant. George Washington promotes somebody else and he get angry and he joined the enemy. Attack, oh, you, you, you know what? Such a good hero, go ahead.
And then, um, and Benedict Arnold defeated the British forces led by General William Howie. And John Burgundy. And Arnold felt his accomplishments were undervalued because. Because Arnold did a big piece, uh like a charge, a big charge that. That won the battle, but then Hiro- but then Hiroto Gates was actually, was actually, was like actually rewarded for that.
There is a wonderful oversimplified American Revolution, number one. Number two, your homework, okay, optional. Watch it again and write something like some historian comment about it. Hey, this, you are so right, right, and you make it humorous, so Matthew will love it, and Frank will love it. But he makes some mistakes, if you can find it, you're wonderful, so that's your homework. Keep on reading, so fine, if you don't want to, want to, okay.
Arnold felt his accomplishments were undervalued. He later turned traitor and attempted to hand the port of West Point over to British. British.
Okay, keep on going.
The Battle of Yorktown, this battle. In seventeen eighty one was also called the Siege of Yorktown. French officer, there's Marty de Lafayette. Lafayette.
Lafayette.
Um, and Admiral Fran- Admiral Francis Joseph de Grasse. He en- encomit the Roxenbu. Aided patriots in defeating Lieutenant General Charles Cornwallis. On the Yorktown Peninsula of Virginia to end the revolution.
Oh, this part didn't mention an important person, the aide of George Washington, Alexander Hamilton. Alexander Hamilton, yeah, participated in. And arranged the Battle of Yorktown, and I have this wonderful book called, uh. Alexander Hamilton, and that is a high school and college level book. Okay, let me show you, let me show you, let me show you.
Oh, cool.
How, how many pages? And I, shame to me, I haven't finished cover to cover, I probably finish only fifty percent. And how many pages? Seven hundred ninety pages, okay, so it's not my fault I haven't finished yet. But Alexander Hamilton is a very, very important person. He probably are the real founding father of the United States. Because he built the banking system, the industrialization. And he made the United States a first world country rather than third world country. He built the industry, he made the United States into an empire. Industry, industrialization, so Trump probably can learn a lot from this book. But whether he want to read this book or not, that's a different issue, this is a wonderful historical research. Based upon this wonderful book, they made a what? Musical Alexander Hamilton, did, did you wish that Alexander Hamilton, one thousand dollar a ticket? I'm too poor to, to buy the ticket.
No, no, because, um, there are, because, um.
You just watch some YouTube.
We can't really go there because you don't have that much time and be, um, I mean, we have enough money, but then. And then like, there's like more exciting things to go.
That's right, oh, there's more insight, like, yeah, like, ride your bike to Austin, okay, anyway. Uh, you have a lot of beautiful trail in California, in the future, yeah, go, keep on going.
Oh, yeah, and, okay, um. Articles of the Confederation, this document was written in seventeen seventy seven and adopted in seventeen eighty one. This served as a constitution and guideline for governing the colonies. Treaty of Paris, this treaty officially conducted the war. In seventeen eighty three and was signed between American representatives and Ben- and Ben Franklin. John, John Jay, John Adams and Henry Lawrence. And the British representative of King George the Third, Dave- David Har- Hartley.
Okay, listen, listen, George the Third take his job too seriously. He regularly go crazy, he got so much pressure on his job, you know. And he regularly go crazy, it's probably also genetic, the, the, the British. King and the German king, Austrian king, they marry their cousins, they marry their relatives, so. In order to keep their gene pure and power prestige, they ruined their genetic pool. So there's a lot of them have a lot of genetic diseases, so. Don't aspire to become a king, it's not a good job, okay? Even president are not a very good job, I want my son to become a president, I motivate him, I say, hey, why? You can be US president, you were born in this country, he said, I don't want the job. You got assassinated so easily. So keep on going, but there is a wonderful movie called The Madness of the King. George the Third, it's a wonderful movie, is beautiful, I watched it three times. The Madness of the King, George the Third, okay, go ahead.
And, okay, um, okay, uh. David Hartley, the result was that British part of Canada but turned over all claims of land east of the Mississippi River. Northwest Territory between not seventeen eight eighty five and seventeen ninety five. This referred to the region encompassing Idaho.
Ohio, not I- I- Ohio.
Ohio, Indiana and Illinois. E- Illinois, Michigan and Win.
I traveled all of these states driving my vehicle. Go through, have a lot of interesting experience, go ahead.
Native, natives traded first for guns with the British in Canada. The Americans continued pushing west, widespread conflicts occurred in this area, Northwest Indian War. This conflict was between the Americans and the. British, who are supported by Confederacy of North American tribes. On the Confederates of Confederacy's side was. Was the Shawnee and Miami under chief's blue jacket. And Little Turtle. Battles included wabash and fallen taters. The British and Native Americans were defeated, Little Turtle supported peace, the peace effort. And aided in keeping his people out of the future Shawnee Alliance led by Tex.
Okay, read the end, no good war, go ahead.
No good war, in my opinion, there was never a good war or bad peace, Benjamin Franklin.
Oh, question, question, Benjamin's picture is on which US currency? What denomination?
One hundred?
Yes, how do you know?
Uh, because I saw lots of one hundred bills, because my bro- because my brother keeps on waving them around, trying to brag.
Waited up, oh, here's my one kilogram of one hundred dollar bill, or one ton of dollar bill, is that?
No, 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 he's like waving one like around like la 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 la, I got one hundred dollar bill, you didn't.
Never tell him, never tell that to the outside person, uh, some person may, you know, tell to get it. Okay, there's a joke, there's a comedian talk about, hey, all the trouble of the United States came from one hundred dollar. From Benjamin Franklin, you know, that's how the seven eleven got robbed, okay? Seven eleven, the grocery got robbed, good, good, good job, oh, by the way. Benjamin Franklin made so much contribution to the United States. Three contribution Benjamin Franklin to the United States, go, three.
So first off, he was a founding fathers and he's in the one of the founding fathers, second off, uh. He was, he, uh, well, I don't think, well, he supported like the French Revolution or something like that. Yeah, yeah.
He was ambassador for France, and he was a diplomat, he was a big fox. He tricked the French people to finance, listen, no, no, say, say strict, say strict. Don't, bro, I'm, I'm talking, so you have to pay one hundred percent attention, so he used his charm. His diplomacy, he tricked the French people to support the American to fight with the British. You know what? The French spent so much money. Got so many his own soldier killed. I mean, they bankrupt their own country, so therefore the French king. Which French king got the key cut, cut off, which one?
Um, there's King Louis the ten.
Sixteen, 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 remember, Louis the Sixteen and his wife, oh, got his cat cut off, why?
Because, because they were in charge of every single thing, and, and then, and then there, and then it's like, if there's one person to blame, it's the king. AKA the person who is in charge of what's going on.
That's right, if a king bankrupt his own country by start a war, and the war, re- listen carefully. Are very expensive. War, fighting a war with a big country, a superpower like the Britain. Are very expensive, and basically the French support the Americans. Bankrupt their own country, when you bankrupt your own country, there was so much inflation, so the poor people have no bread. When the poor people have no bread, they read. Yeah, they write, that's where the French revolution came from, all from the one hundred dollar bill, okay? Benjamin Franklin, because this guy is an old fox, he's a very tricky, very smart. And if you read his books, it make you very tricky and very smart, okay, keep on going. Very tricky guy, very tricky.
Okay, pa- page twenty six.
Yes.
Northwest Ordinance, written in seventeen eighty seven, while the Articles of the Confederation were. In, uh, in effect, this legislation outlined how new states and territories would be. Created from recently acquired areas. It's prohibit, it prohibited slavery in new territories, protected religious freedom and trial by jury and so. And stipulated, and stipulated that states were to be responsible for public education. US Constitution, the Constitution was drafted amid much discussion and debate. It was designed to replace the Articles of the Confederation, which had no powers to raise money, borrow money or raise an army. Ratification been began late seventeen eighty seven and. By seventeen eighty eight and was officially adopted. Adopted, Delaware was the first state to ratify the Constitution and Rhode Island was the last. Federalist Papers, these individual, this, these individual essays were written. In seventeen eighty seven and seventeen eighty eight to support the new constitution. And to encourage states to ratify the document, the chief of, of the authors were Alexander Hamilton. Him again.
Wonderful, 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 I'm glad that they talk about Alexander Hamilton. I'm going to teach you more about Alexander Hamilton, at, at least I read five hundred page of his book. Go.
Essay number ten was written by, was written by Madison and explain, explain. Why Republican government would work for a large country. All the essays were later published together as a book, the Federalist Papers.
Okay, stop, 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 Federalist Papers. I read the Federalist Papers in graduate school, college students cannot understand it. Only the graduate school students, but of course I teach my high school students Federalist Papers. And if you read the Federalist Papers, you go to law school and you become a senator or something of California. Hey, that's. That's a good job, you meet with a lot of people, you can represent Silicon Valley. Matthew, is that good, people usually don't assassinate senators or a House of Representatives. How about that? Is that good job description for you, just talk with people, wanting them and dying them, flatter them, get their vote?
Sure.
Right? Okay, so I probably will teach you Federalist Papers if you want to. It's quite a torture when I learn that, okay, okay, I expect you get one hundred. Attention, go. Because it's an easy level, the Young Republic and the founding fathers.
Well, who's known as the father of Constitution, um.
Go.
It's, I think Tom, I think it's Thomas Jefferson.
Father of the Constitution is not Thomas Jefferson. Uh, Thomas Jefferson is, you can call him the father, the writer of the Declaration of Independence. Not George Washington, George Washington is father of the republic, it's James Madison. Now, write it down, James Madison, this dude is. A lawyer, again, American founding father, either they are lawyers or the slave owner, they are. The rich people, the land owner, the slave owners, or the business people, the lawyers. Or the smugglers.
Which fa- father wrote most of the Declaration of Independence, uh. Um, Benjamin Franklin, I think.
Wrong, which founding fathers wrote the most of that, this dude, Thomas Jefferson. He's a highly educated person, and he established, listen, listen, he established. The University of Virginia, read down the University of Virginia. And the University of Virginia gave me in their good heart, gave me a graduate school acceptance. And I said, no. Why? It's a wonderful university, Matthew, you guess.
Um, because you had a better, you, because it didn't, A, it didn't fit, fit your goals, or B, if, if you had a better.
They didn't give me money. They didn't give me scholarship, and I will regret, I, I kill that to my students all the time, okay, anyway.
Okay, uh, which father, well, um, Democratic, Republican?
Yes, yes.
Which was the second president of the United States, um, Thomas Jefferson?
Wrong, oh. Thomas Jefferson is number three.
Oh, yeah.
John Adam, John Adam. John Adam is an excellent lawyer, he have a very bad temperament. And he's one of the most expensive lawyers in New York.
And then on a hundred bill.
Lawyer, okay. And nobody like him, nobody like him, but eh, he's a very bitter, he's very sharp. He's very ugly, he's short, and. His family emphasize on education, so therefore he's. He built a dynasty, I think one of his other, his song become a president, keep on going.
Okay, a D?
Yes, you are right, go.
Uh, Louisiana Purchase was made during, um. Uh, Thomas Jefferson?
Wonderful. Louisiana Purchase. Increase, increased the United States territory by fifty percent, by fifty percent.
Okay, what was the first name of you? Place, uh, Federalist Article, right?
Article of Confederation is very weak and not functional, what, go.
John Jay, I think.
Correct, go.
Which president was warned against political parties and foreign alliances in his farewell address? Um, John Adams, I think.
Wrong, write it down, where's your notebook, where's your notebook? Which president warned against political parties and foreign alliance in his farewell address? George Washington. And who wrote the, 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 do you think George Washington wrote his own speech? No. No. I don't know how many book this guy read, eh, George Washington don't read books. He's land gentry, he's very proud of his horsemanship, he's shooting. And he's a generalship, and he accumulated land, 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 more land and slave. He don't read books, he cannot read and write, he can read, but he cannot write, this dude. Alexander Hamilton. Alexander Hamilton wrote his speeches, he warned against political parties. George Washington don't like the two-party system or any party system. And he don't want the United States to fight the foreign war. To build political alliance, this is, write down, the first foreign policy statement. And read by his song, almost like a song, step song, okay? Alexander Hamilton is Washington's. Attaché, military attaché. And basically, whenever he don't understand anything, he call Alexander Hamilton, this guy is a highly educated person. And he, you know what, where he got his education, he educated himself. Matthew, the all the real education are self-education, I'm assisting you, I'm not educating you. I'm assisting your self-education, make sense, you learn from Alexander Hamilton. Example, example, don't learn from him, his example. Not everything, he got himself killed because he fought the very stupid duel, go.
Which for document list the first ten amendments on to the Constitution, um, it was Bill of Rights, I think.
Wonderful, Naomi, Bill of Rights have a ten.
Because, uh, one is like, uh. Um, you cannot search someone's like house, property, uh, all people are allowed to bear firearms. And then like. And then. Uh, and then, uh, oh, yeah. You're not, the police are not allowed to search your, your house unless you give them permission.
Good job.
Uh, also, they cannot get us in there without your permission.
Not, 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 read the answer, good job, good job. Good job, good job, good job, I'm going to quiz you the ten. Bill of Rights, okay, a lot of high schoolers don't know. And your wonderful school already building, you are good foundation, ten Bill of Rights. Everybody is supposed to know, okay, now, read the answer sheet, like, tell me how many you got right, go. Number one, James Madison, Thomas Jefferson, Federalist, Federalist, Federalist Party, John Adams. Benjamin Franklin, Jefferson, yeah.
Bill of Rights, George.
Do you want the hardest level? Ten median level.
Okay.
Question, ten median level question. But not the hardest, it's not fair for you. National spelling bee style.
Which founding father was the principal author of the Federalist Papers along with James Madison? And John Jay, that was Alexander Hamilton.
Correct, correct, so Alexander Hamilton, whenever I have a chance, uh, remind me. I read a lot of this guy's writings, and he's amazing dude, okay? Especially he came from a very humble beginning, very, very humble beginning, okay? And he grew very far, and he educated himself, that's amazing. And he's a lot more educated than what, than George Washington. And he's a rivalry, his knowledge is a rivalry of Thomas Jefferson, Thomas Jefferson is also very smart guy, he read a lot of books. But Thomas Jefferson came from a very smart, no, no, no. Very rich father of family, edu- educated and rich family. Have a normal family life, and this guy don't have a normal family life, okay, anyway, anyway. Go ahead, we are going to study. Go.
Um, what, what major the, the most, the most, the most. Give that the George Washington, the president, his presidency, demonstrating the power of the new federal government, um. There's only three answers on this one, oh. Um, Nat Turner, no, because, because Nat Turner was, um. He, he was a man who, who was like, uh, so like a crazy slave. But he had a right idea, he had a right idea.
That's right.
Boston Tea Party is, uh, no, because that was.
Boston Tea Party is too early, right, that's a bit earlier than that, go ahead, um.
I think Shay's Rebellion.
Good job, good job, who is Shay, Shay is the old soldier. And when he finished fighting for George Washington, you know why? The government promised the old soldier a lot of money, oh, you fight for us, we'll pay you. Uh, where's my money? No, 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 I have no money, okay, let me write you a note. When we win the revolution, I will pay you this much, this much money, right? But when they win the revolution, the government have no money, what do they do, they gave them an inflation. They write them a one hundred dollar bill, right, the notes, when they get that piece of paper, the money doesn't worth anything anymore. So they were very angry, they want their money back, they raise up a rebellion. Because these are the old soldiers, they are poor, they bankrupt, they are wanting their money, you know what the government will do to them? Crush them, crush them.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, whiskey revolution, like, that just doesn't sound like what George Washington would do.
That's right. Keep on going.
Which act signed at, under President John Adams, limited speech critical of the government, um. The, um. I think, well, so usually embargo means, like, you're stopping, you're stopping like, uh. You're stopping like, uh, flow or like supply or something.
That's right.
Area Act, judiciary is like part of, like, the government.
Judiciary is the law, the court system, court system.
Alien and seduction acts, I mean. Hmm, it sounds like something that they would do in, oh, really?
Alien is a foreigner. Sedition, you trick our country's people against their own government, you trying to criticize me, I arrest you. So if this is alien a sedition act.
Oh yeah, uh, so, well, so it's, it sounded more like what, like, uh, someone would do in World War Two. Because like, if you're, if you're in America, like, they did lots of alien, alien, enemy alien acts on like, uh. On, uh, Japanese.
That's right, so this one is a very national archive from US government. So this one is relatively more accurate, I love. Wikipedia, but some people don't trust them, so therefore we are using the National Archives. The primary sources, you are going to read for me, go.
Passed in preparation for anticipated war with France, the Alien and Seduction, Sed- Sedition Acts tightened. Prostructions on for foreign-born Americans are limited, speech critical of the.
So don't criticize me, you feel criticize me, I put you in jail, keep on going.
In seventeen ninety-eight, the United States stuck on, stood on the brink of war with France. The Federalist Party was that, which advocated for a strong, um, central government. Believe that Democratic Republican criticism of Fed- Federalist policies were disloyal and fair. That aliens or non-citizens were living in the United States would sympathize. With friend, with the French.
Okay, listen, listen, listen carefully, who are the Confederate paper is the Alexander Hamilton? And the second president of United States, these are people who love Britain. They want the strong central government, they hate French people, they hate the French Revolution. And who love French Revolution? Thomas Jefferson and the Thomas Jefferson at the Democratic Republic. The Federalist Party. And the Democratic Republican Party, they hate each other. Okay, so the president of United States and the Federalist Party, uh, they think. French people are hyping the Democratic Republic, hyping, uh, what, Thomas Jefferson.
Federalist controlled Congress passed four laws known collectively as the Alien and Seduction Laws. These laws raised the.
Residency, residency requirement, you have to live in this state for, for example, five years, ten years. In order to avoid, okay, that, in order to become a citizen, go, oh, from five to fourteen years. Fifteen years is a long time, go.
Years authorize the president to deploy, to deport aliens and.
Aliens, i- isn't aliens a interesting word, right? Aliens can be from outer space, yes or no, from Mars.
Yeah, but then they also can say, oh, you're enemy alien, basically.
That's right, yeah. You're the damn foreigners, so that's the alien, or else you are Martians or from the outer space. Yeah, they treat the people from other countries in English as aliens, or anyway, keep on going.
Permitted their arrest, imprisonment and deport deportation during wartime. The Seduction, Sed- Seduction Act made it a crime for Americans. Citizens to print other or publish any false schedules and malicious writing about the government.
Okay, okay, who decide what is a false, fake news? Malicious writing, who decide that?
The government.
That's right, so, so they can say whatever they want to say, okay, keep on going.
The laws were directly directed against the Democratic Republicans, a party typically favored by new. Who, um.
New citizen.
New citizens, the only journalists supported. The only journalists, uh, don't, the only journalists prosecuted under the Seduction Act were editor. Editors of Democratic Republican newspapers. Sedition Act trials along with the Senate, Senate's use of con- contempt. Powers to suppress dissent, set off a firestorm of criticism against the Federalists. And contributed to their defeat in the election of eighteen thousand. After which the acts were replay, were repealed. Or allowed to expire.
What is expire? Let give you a vocabulary test, what is expire?
Um, expire is like, oh, it's like you don't do it anymore. Or, oh, oh, it's, it's out of its term.
Out of its term, okay, good job, this food cannot be eaten because it's going to be bad for your stomach, okay, that's why, um.
Well, okay, I'll do a charging cable, mom.
Okay. That's a wonderful, that's a wonderful, so we finish this, we finish this. Hey, I'm, I was testing my students on TOEFL vocabulary and now I'm giving you a evaluation. And you are doing very good because some of the high school students cannot even read it. I'm not going to test you SAT vocabulary, just humor me for five minutes. Let's do this, let's give you a quiz, compare you with my other students, see, oh, oh, no, 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 no. Matthew, randomly from one to eight, give me a number, random number, go and give me a number. Good job, now you choose seven, you got it, go.
Okay.
Auction, which one, one, two, three?
Auction is, um, it's sort of like a sale. Endorse to support. Thermal related to heat. Uh, educate to. To s- to stimulate provoke. Deduce to, um. Is, I think.
Use the power of elimination, tell me, one, two, three, four.
So I don't think is.
Use the power of elimination.
I don't think it's four, I don't think it's, um, one, it's not one, it's not four, um, it's. I don't, I could be perception, there also could be two reason. I think, I think not reason, I think just go with perception.
That's wrong.
Then. To reason infer, I think?
Correct, deduce, use deductive, deductive logic. We will learn logic in the future, or also scientific, scientific reasoning, okay? I think both of your parents know this one, this logic very well, very well.
Okay, indicate to show point. Confide to, in to, um. In trust disclosed sort of that, I think. Yes, presumptions to, um.
This is hard, I'm, I'm not going to tell you what grade you're supposed to know this one, I'm not going to tell you.
No, eh, well, presumptuous, no, I don't think so, um.
Use elimination.
So I don't think it's access, I don't think it's regular payment, I don't think it's excessively forward, I don't. Complete, perfect, I don't think, okay, I think, um, to know, accept.
The first one?
Yeah.
Wrong. Try again.
Then, uh. I think. Excessively forward, I'm not sure.
What that mean, what does that mean excessively forward presumption, what is presumptuous?
Um, so I think like.
Give me example, give me examples, think about something, and I will give you example.
Um, a presumptuous idea is to, um, is to. Try, is to, um, bike, ten, bike one, one mile per day.
No, presumptuous is you, do you have a friend, do you have a friend in your neighborhood, yes or no, your age? Okay, for example, if you go to your friend and you ask them, hey, can I borrow you a bike for a day? It's not presumptuous if you know your friend very well. But if you ask your friend, can I borrow a million dollar from you, you are so rich and I'm not that rich? Oh, 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 you're a sports car. How long you have sports car for a year? You are not using it anyway, that's the presumptuous, make sense? But if you borrow your friend's bike for a day or a book, for example, uh, my students borrow the book from me. I said, hey. They said, can I borrow for a week? It's no, a year, you cannot finish that in a week. Uh, why not three, three books, okay? If my student borrow book from me, it's not presumptuous, but if they borrow money from me. A hundred bucks. That's the presumptuous, right? They shouldn't do that. My student, Matthew, don't do that, Matthew, don't do that to me, okay? That's the presumption, that's the excessively forward.
Alright, um, unite to get together, join, third one. Recognize to, um. To know, accept. Jetison to, dang, I don't know this one.
Just elimination, use, use your gut feeling, use your gut feeling.
I think to, um. I think it's to, um, dishonor.
Wrong. Now take your note, take your notebook, take your notebook and write it down. This is, I learned this one in law school, it's a legal term, listen carefully. In the ancient time, maybe five hundred years ago. The captain of the ship have the legal right to discard, to throw away. The cargoes. Of the ship to the sea. Make sense? In the storm, when the ship is going to capsize, right? The captain have the right to throw away everybody's money and cargoes to the sea in order to save everybody. But that means the jetson of the goods, but the captain don't have the right to throw away people, right? You cannot say, hey, I don't like you, you look ugly to me and you insulted me, let me throw you into the sea, no, no, no. You don't have the right, but you can throw away anybody's money, goods, cargoes, luggage. To the sea, okay, and you don't have to compensate, that mean discard, throw away, okay, it's a legal term.
Okay, author to a writer, basically, that, funny knows that. An annuity, annuity, um. Um, not writer, not to simulate, I don't think it's simulated, um. I don't think it's perfect, I, um. Finish your forty question.
Rest, ten minutes.
Uh, two. I think it's to stimul, I don't know, um, I think.
You don't know is okay, because that mean you are not old enough. If you're forty-five, no, 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 if you're fifty-five years old or ninety-five years old. These people know annuity, they want regular payment, take your notes. Write it down and research how the annuity system was done. Mean regular payment, every month or every year, you have a big sum of money from the government. Or from your investment bank. From the bank who invest for you. Every month you have a big check, you have a check, regular money, not a big check, but every month you have a check, regular payment.
Sensation is, um. Like. Um, to. Sort of like a perception, I think. Assumptions, um.
No auspicious, 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 auspicious.
Oh, auspicious, I think it's to in, entrust disclose, this sort. Support, I don't think it supports auspicious.
Write it down, your notebook, notebook. Usually during the new year or Chinese New Year, you write a note to your friend, I wish you a auspicious new year. I wish you not take notes, I write to my friends or my teachers. When I was young, I wish you auspicious new year, you have a su- successful, prosperous, prosperous year. Useful good wish, let me, a good star, I wish you a good star in your life.
Okay, absolute to complete, perfect, I think. No, not, um. Really, um, two, I think. Per, I think it's, um. I think it's either perception or dishonor.
Just give me a number.
Okay, uh, two.
Take notes, not thirty. Not thirty is famous for the wrong reason. Famous for the wrong reason, that mean dishonor, some people did something very, very wrong. Like steal money from the government, uh, when they were office officials. When they were president and stuff like that. And they become very famous, right?
Okay, audible, um, possible to hear loud. Crave to desire.
Wonderful.
I learned most of these one in class and like.
In what class, in what class, in what class?
Oh, in school, so, so, oh yeah, I think you should like assign this to children, like to your. So, so it's called, uh, man being?
Oh, yeah, 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 of course, my student use man being, that's very good, you can keep on climbing, right, to different levels, congratulate, okay?
Okay, exquisite, uh, elegant, beautiful.
Wonderful, where did you learn this word exquisite, where? From a book or man being?
From books.
What book, what book, can you remember? History books, historical novel?
Eh, I think both, I'm not sure, because like, um.
Congratulations. Okay, smile, smile.
Okay, uh, can you tell me like the H thingy now?
This is eighth grader plus, eight, eighth grader and plus. Okay, eighth grader and plus, let me gi- give you ten, just humor me once, okay, humor me once. Give me a number from, uh, z, from one to eighteen, give me a number.
Um, I'd say nine, because it's in the middle.
Okay, cool. Oh, we only do ten, ten or five, go, ten or five, not twenty. Guess, you can guess, but use elimination or gut feeling, go.
One who appo- who opposes or contends, I think.
So give me a number.
Uh, one?
It, it is overly sweet, this is a sign, this is ninth grader's biology. Sweet, sugar.
Self, uh, self, um. Occurring at what, regu- irregular intervals?
Wrong. If I get it wrong, that's shame on me.
Ta-tastic, um. Dang, I shouldn't have that, I shouldn't have chose this one. Dang, I should not have done, I should not have chose this one.
Tactic agreement, this is randomly, it's okay, it's not a test, it's just, you know, for me to humor myself.
Um tactic agree, uh I tactic um. Mum, um um I think. Eh one? I think one.
Ha, we if we have a tactic a- agreement, we didn't have to speak, we are great.
Oh, paddle mean. Paddle meaning meaningless Bible, I don't talk.
Wow, 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 congratulations. This is eleven twelve squider, eleven Greek, not eleven year old, eleven twelve squider. Vocabulary. Last one, last one. Last one.
Um. I think overwhelming.
It is quite reserved. Okay, I'm not going to do it because it's almost like a child abuse. Okay, I'm not abusing you. I'm not abuse you. See, I'm not even abuse you in why modernism ruined everything. Uh uh talk about civilization, I'm using this one to talk with my other students is about history. I'm going to use this one for my ninth grader students in. Vancouver. Vancouver and Edmonton. Canada. Okay, so anyway, we have five wonderful minutes and let's keep on, wow. National History B, I record this one for you. Today we have a section three and you did my homework, right? Uh let me spend several minutes. Last time I brought this movie for my students, God and generals, but they are not allow me to watch this one with you. But it's okay, but if you want the book, uh Gettysburg, your mom got the Gettysburg. Uh let me give you, we have three minutes, let's do some questions. I'm going to put all these questions to you and an even harder one. Uh questions with answers. Okay, these questions with answers, I'm going to put it on our least median level. Now read, read and go.
What founding father was principal author of the Federalist Papers along with James Madison and John Jay?
You got this one right, congratulations, keep on going.
Which major domestic event that George Washington?
I was wrong and you are wrong, your teacher can be wrong, is a whiskey rebellion. And then whiskey rebellion, what whiskey rebellion? These people who make their own whiskey, these people from uh they call the moonshine. They don't want to pay whiskey tax to the government, so the government crush them. Now read loud and clear, okay? Oh, these people from where? They don't want to pay taxes. If you don't pay western with. Where? Western Pennsylvania, these people in the mountain, right? Who are largely Scott Irish people. These people like the vice president of the United States, J D Vance. They are J D Vance, the vice president of the United States, they are Scott, Scottish Irish people. They don't want to pay taxes from the west of Virginia, uh v- 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 Pennsylvania, the hillbillies. The hillbillies, keep on going, hillbillies don't want to pay taxes. If government trying to test them, they shoot at the tax collector, so.
The whiskey rebellion was a violent uprising by farmers in Western Pennsylvania. In seventeen ninety four against the federal excise tax on distilled spirits. Especially whiskey, specifically whiskey, this tax hmm. In in Asia.
You heard this in seventeen ninety one.
Seventeen ninety one was intended to generate revenue for the new federal government. Farmers went to Pennsylvania who often distilled surplus grain into whiskey, strongly resisted the task. Tax viewing viewing it was unfair and burdensome. Key aspects of the whiskey rebilitation cause. The primary cause was the excess. Excess tax.
Access uh ba- 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 tax is is the value added, value added. That is a business school, you learn that in business school, okay, anyway. In high school or college, keep on going.
Which was seen as a burden on farmers and a sign of the federal government outstepping out. Overstepping its authority, participants, primarily farmers in Western Pers- Pe- Pe- Pennsylvania.
Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania hmm.
Who were lar- largely Scottish, Irish and relied on whiskey production for income and bargaining.
Okay, class is over and you research a little more about whiskey rebellion as your homework. Uh. Tell me what you're supposed to be your homework, tell me.
Oh, so read ten pages.
Ten pages.
Whiskey rebellion and um. And um George and then research genocide, annuity, auspicious and loyalty.
Good job, good job. Hey, and one more homework, optional, okay? Optional, you don't have to do it. List uh, write me a list of the books you already read, read, and the book you love. Anything related with history or not related with history, write me ten books names, okay? Ten.
All right.
Ten, oh five, if not ten, five is fine, but I hope ten, just email that to me. You have my email, yes or no? Or you share a document on Google, you haven't shared a document on Google with me yet, and you can write your class notes. On the Google shared document, and I think with your parents, they know computer very well. You probably know more about computer than me, okay? See you tomorrow.
See you.
Another way to see you tomorrow, do ten pages, okay? Ten pages.
Bye.
Bye.